Glendale CA, I'm sorry, www.glendalca.gov. By scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which you are seeing on the screen and left top portion of the screen. Please don't call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kusakin.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Ajemian. Next item, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, June 16, 2020, Special Public Meeting of the City Council, was posted on Wednesday, June 10, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Ms. Yasmeen Bures.
We're going to still go to Mr. Ajemian, who will read the next items into the...
One would be community development regarding Glendale business recovery strategy. One, a motion to adopt and file the Glendale business recovery strategy in response to the economic and public health impacts of COVID-19. B, resolution to appropriate $150,000 from Measure S fund balance to fiscal year 1920, Measure S economic recovery programs to immediately initiate Alfresco Glendale program.
Ms. Yasmeen Bures.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council, good afternoon. We are here this afternoon to provide you information related to Glendale's business recovery strategy that was put together rather quickly by your community development department staff. And here to provide you with the information is Ms. Darlene Sanchez, who is our Assistant Department Head with the department. Darlene.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Good afternoon. As the events of COVID-19 pandemic have unfolded and continue to impact not only our nation but our city, our focus in the Economic Development Division has been a laser focus on the economic crisis and its specific impact on the Glendale business community. Since March 16, when Glendale declared a state of emergency, your Economic Development Division has been working closely with Glendale businesses, listening to their concerns, offering support, and connecting them with available resources. So what is before you this afternoon is a culmination of actions the city has already taken, a narrative to show you what we are currently doing, and a presentation of a written strategy that keeps us moving forward. As I highlight some of the action that as a city we have already taken, we have included these items in the written strategy. The strategy before you this afternoon is intended to tell you Glendale businesses' recovery story. Today, we're not at the beginning of that recovery story, nor are we at the end. This slide here, like I said, is detailed in the written strategy, but it lists out some of the responsive actions our city has already taken. I'm just going to highlight a few of those. Items such as the extension of plan checks and permits that would have expired, relaxing parking enforcements, free fare on the B-line, a CDBG small business grant program, and the recent adoption of the emergency order to place a temporary cap on delivery fees. Together, these actions shaped our recovery by providing different ways for financial And here, in economic development, there are, there was some things that we did internally that we wanted to show you as well. Really, the slide depicts that some more recovery efforts, maintaining our inspection and permitting counters as open, tailoring our social media platforms and website and concierge programs to support the local businesses. It also is really important that we partnered with the chambers and our business associations. So all the intent, although the intent from the beginning of our recovery efforts was to provide immediate relief, as we moved forward, we needed to continue to reach out and stay connected with the businesses and engage them directly. So we knew that solutions to Glendale's recovery would also need to be answered by the business community, and we did this in several ways. The first was through a business survey. On Thursday, May 14, the Economic Development Division released a survey asking, what is the single most important thing the city of Glendale can do for your business right now? During that initial survey, a lot of the answers that we got were really consistent with the phone calls and the emails that we had received over the last couple of months. Businesses were looking to the city to provide funding, offer rental assistance, allow businesses to reopen, and provide clear communication and messaging about our new guidelines. So then we asked them, well, what is your biggest concern when you are able to open? They said they were really concerned about any new compliance, about reconnection with customers, and also help with capital. So although the survey was very telling, the second action that we took was to convene a business recovery task force. On May 15, we invited participants from a wide range of business sectors to be part of this task force and held our first meeting just six days later on May 21. Our goal was to invite a good representation of a range of Glendale businesses. The task force was comprised of more than 40 stakeholders that represented important industry segments, including retail, hospitality, office, healthcare, fitness, financial institutions, nonprofits, media, business associations, as well as some public partners at the school district and college. Staff set the list, conferred this with the city manager's office, and created what we thought was a group of opinion leaders who have demonstrated a record of engagement with the city that could offer not just their own opinion, but represent the larger business sector that they would be part of. So throughout my 20 years in public sector, I've been part of many strategies, both on the implementation and the development side, and convening a community task force, collecting feedback, and then ensuring that there are actionable steps that relate to a larger goal is a very involved process. But this task force was very engaged. They made themselves available not only for hours-long task force meetings, but also focus group meetings, phone calls, and emails. So we're coming to you four weeks after inviting a task force of business community members with a strategy that details steps that the city can take to ensure local businesses can continue to open quickly and safely. At this point, I'm going to ask our deputy director, Jennifer Hiromoto, to present these findings from the task force and also describe these implementation steps.
Thank you, Mrs. Sanchez. Good afternoon, Mayor Agajanian and members of council. As Darlene mentioned, we had, we had a very large task force, and then we divided them up into essentially these working groups to tackle some of the topics that we know are very important. So it was divided into Alfresco Glendale, Health Code Compliance and PPE Legislation, Small Business and Nonprofits, Child Care, and Arts Hospitality and Leisure. With the conversation from the task force based on these focus groups, we then issued another survey to the business community to further drill down some of the outstanding questions we had related to these topics. So just to highlight some of these, some of the outcomes, and I realize too, as council members, you have probably heard firsthand to direct feedback from your business community. And throughout this conversation today, I'm hoping that we can also glean from you some of these conversations. So just a few highlights. On the business survey, one of the questions was asked, what PPE do businesses anticipate buying? And of those, we had the most popular were hand sanitizer followed by disinfectants and then reusable masks. We then asked, how much, how much are you anticipating spending? And about 75% of the respondents said that they will spend about $1,000 or less. So again, that's really helpful as we look to develop a potential grant program if we know that that is the potential number. This is just kind of a general look at some of the survey responses. So 28% of the respondents said that they were interested in having some sort of temporary outdoor dining, shopping, or workout space. And this is also consistent with the amount of folks who were restaurateurs who responded to the survey. So we do understand that restaurants want the outdoor dining component to help make up for the loss of capacity. Another highlight was 60% of the survey respondents have not discussed repayment arrangements with their landlords. Obviously, the city council has spent significant time discussing this. And then another 21% of respondents said that they found childcare to be an issue. And again, we're trying to match that with the funding allocations that the council has taken. There were also an opportunity for some open-ended questions, and in the bottom you see a couple of quotes. Overall, I think what we've seen is there's despair. There are businesses in our community who are just feeling hopeless right now. And I think one of these quotes sums it up, that this entire thing has been devastating. So that hits home for us, and I'm sure certainly for the city council, and the question at hand is, what can we do to support our business community and help provide some hope as we look to hopefully turn a corner on this? We did talk a bit about the federal funding. So in this survey, we had about 75% of respondents that said yes, they did apply for the grant programs. That's a noticeable uptick compared to the first survey where we only had 37% of respondents who actually applied for those federal grant funds. So, so that's good, that we had more people respond. We were curious and knowing, why didn't that other 25% apply for those funds? The bottom line is, it's just too much effort for too little fun. We wanted to know that information because if we do develop a grant program, there may be folks who just don't want to apply because they don't, they may not feel that it's worth their time and effort. But with that in mind, we did ask whether the, if a grant program were developed, how would businesses use those funds? And the majority of respondents said operating costs, followed by back rent, and then other. And other included things such as work-from-home equipment, advertising, marketing, paying the personal loan I pulled to pay in order to pay rent. So some very specific items there. And then another question was, how can the city best serve your business as we move to recovery? That we have some control over. So respondents were asked to pick their top three that apply, and really just working backward, the number one item was for the city to provide grant programs, followed by grant programs for PPE, and finally, providing clear, concise, and frequent communication. And you can see some of the other comments as well. So with all of this feedback from the surveys, from the task force, and also really over the past three months of calls, of conversation with council, we used all of this and put it into a strategy. I think there's really four themes here, and we'll go through these action items. But the first, folks want clear and concise messaging. We need to support the small businesses and microenterprises. The third is to help businesses adhere to the health protocols, and then finally, advocate for all business. There are some sectors here that may seem more represented than others. It is simply, we care about all of our businesses in the community, and we'll do whatever we can to make sure that they, that they have a voice and that they have hope through this as well. So if you don't mind, I'll just go through some of the objectives and some of the implementation steps. So regarding the clear and concise messaging, number one is to clearly inform businesses on timelines, safety, protocol, and openings. I'm sure you have heard it, we have certainly heard it, there has been so much confusion out there. Businesses are overwhelmed, they just want to know what to do. So the best that we can help them with that, we will. The second is to boost consumer confidence. Frankly, people are afraid at this point. They're afraid to go out and shop, they don't know what's open. So anything we can do to help with that, that will be part of our responsibility. Attract new local, regional customers, and the city should serve as a clearinghouse of information, again, because there's just so much out there. So how are we going to do that? A few things. One, to develop stronger relationships with the county. I know that our, our city has been working on that, but there's other ways in which especially the Economic Development Division can help, especially with that clear and concise messaging. Again, develop a list of guidelines, and even looking at developing visible signage for local businesses similar to what restaurant grades have. Now, we would have to partner up with the county on that because it's somewhat out of our jurisdiction, but certainly, I think it's something that we can take a look in, and how do we make a very clear message for consumers to let them know they can shop again? The fourth is to look at hiring a marketing firm to target regional tourists and reacquaint customers with businesses. And this is really a two-pronged approach. The first is, how do we let people know that Glendale's open for business? And the second is that the tourism industry, of which we have now several hotels, has been hit very hard. The corporate stays that we thought that we were going to get to support some of our hotels here, they will likely not return, at least for some time. So the possible solution could be really looking at the regional tourism market and seeing if we can get people from across Southern California to stay and enjoy the amenities of Glendale. The fourth would be to enhance our website, to provide that interactive way to continue to share information, and finally, to develop a resource guide. Again, there's so much information out there, we need to make it as easy as possible for our businesses to get that information. So that's it for clear and concise messaging. I can continue to go on or pause?
You want to, you want to go through the whole thing?
Question.
Well, yeah, I was just going to ask about the signage for local businesses similar to restaurant grades, and I think that's probably like the thing I know I brought up, and maybe some of us, some others did too, about this COVID-compliant business program that I originally said I think was Riverside, but it's actually San Bernardino. Why do we need, why can't we do that on our own? We can't say that such-and-such a restaurant has gone through, or any kind of retail outlet has gone through a process with us and we're giving them some kind of seal of approval?
So we would certainly take a look into it. Our, just initial research is that San Bernardino County appears to be the one that issued that. So we just want to make sure that we're not overstepping on what the capacity is within the city of Glendale and what the health code regulations are. But to the extent that we would be creative in coming up with something that would be very visible to let folks know that it's COVID-compliant, we would, we would do our best to come up with something that would be clear on that. So we would, we would still have to do some more research to figure out what is the county's responsibility versus where can the city of Glendale make that call on COVID compliance?
Okay. I, I like that, I think we should do that, and so anything we can do to get that moving, and I don't want to get into a lot of, you know, bureaucracy with the county if we don't have to.
But we have to be careful or ask county that whether we can do it or not, right? First, we have to ask.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we can't go around and say this is complying with COVID-19, and then they say, who are you to say they're complying or they're not?
Exactly. And if we go to that first implementation step on that stronger relationship with the county, so that's where we would tie it back to, and, and we would work with the county to see.
Yeah.
What do we have the, the jurisdiction to say, and what is it that we can also, if we can't, if we, if we can't say COVID-compliant, if there's another way to make consumers feel comfortable?
Maybe we'll be right clean.
Clean, yes.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, please. Ms. Paula Devine.
Yes, I, I just have one comment on this particular part of the action plan, and that's the, the one implementation, implementation step that I think is so important, the clear messaging on our website. You know, we get so many complaints about the website, they have to dig for information and hunt for information. Where's the information? This has to be, Jennifer, as easy and as clear as you can make it. Push a button and there's all the information, and not have people, residents, and out-of-town citizens have to dig into our website to find this information. It has to be really easy to find. So that's just my general comment on this particular item of the action plan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Very good. So the second is to support small businesses and microenterprises. So as we have learned through this, about 75% of our business base are small businesses with 25 employees or less. So our objective would be to help businesses and nonprofits through grant programs relieve city-imposed expenses, so we'll, we'll talk a little bit more on that, and encourage outdoor dining during the time that businesses still have limited capacity. So how are we going to do this? And fortunately, the council has already set the stage to move these items forward. The first would be to develop a small business grant through the CDBG program. So outreach for that begins tomorrow, and we'll go, applications will be accepted beginning on July 1. The second would be to expand the grant program, and hopefully with fewer restrictions since the CDBG program is federally funded. So that would be an additional $1.6 million. And again, we would, we would continue to refine that program, but it would, it would be presented to you before we were to move forward.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Say about that $1.6 million, which is on the page five of the report, not on this page. Say again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
No, it just wasn't turning.
Oh.
Now, now it's good.
Okay. I'm sorry, okay, we're good?
Touch base on the $1.6 million and...
Yes.
This is on page two, okay.
Yes, so this $1.6 million was part of the, the funding that the city council approved on June 2 as part of your budget and the overall budget recovery. So in total, the council approved $2.75 million, pardon me. It was $1.75 million for the Measure S fund for the small business recovery and assistance. So what we're suggesting is utilizing $1.6 million of that to be allocated for the development of a small business grant program, and the remaining $150,000 would be utilized for the Alfresco Glendale program.
Yes. And when this will be available to the businesses?
So the $1.6 million, our goal is, hopefully soon, so forgive me, but with the CDBG grant program, since we are announcing that on July 1, while applications will go live, what we're hoping is that we can use that CDBG grant program as a time to, to learn and see what the community feedback is, and then to quickly iterate a, a program and to determine whether $5,000 is that magic number for businesses, and to adjust any guidelines that we may need. So perhaps as soon as, I would say, August, September, to release those funds.
So we had that $5,000 in the program where it was 572,500. We said we will give it to 114 businesses, then on the second phase would be more. So on this one, $1.6 million, entire $1.6 million will go to businesses with $5,000 will be allocated to the businesses? The entire $1.6 million?
That is our general recommendation right now. Again, it, we may need to take, take a few lessons from the, the first, the first phase of the CDBG program, just to determine whether that amount makes sense, and if we need to change any of the guidelines. With the CDBG program, it is more restrictive in that there are, there are income limitations, and that, that may, we're not sure yet how many businesses this will end up, how many businesses will be able to apply for that.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council, the $1.6 million you all allocated by way of Measure S through the budget process, and so that $1.6 million was Measure S funding that the city council approved for the ability for the economic recovery piece.
I just want to make sure that 5,000 is still the magic number that we allocate to the businesses?
Correct, as part of the CDBG.
So that will be 320 businesses?
Correct.
There's no other expenses? The $1.6 going to go to?
Directly? I, I don't know, I would ask that they would, that's my assumption, and we're not hiring any new staff for this.
Because if it's $1.6 going to businesses, will be 320 businesses will be.
Mr. Agajanian, we had $572,000, that was 114 businesses through the CDBG program. If we add another $1.6, we can almost triple that number. That's where we are.
If there is no other expenses, will be 320.
If there's no other expenses, and if we, if we think 5,000 is the right number, what Ms. Hiromoto was saying is we'll use the CDBG program as kind of a first run. Does it make sense at 5,000? Do we realize business needs more? Do they need less? And then we'll make that adjustment. So that's, that's why we're not sure on the exact number. We'll come back to you with that prior to issuing that program, and we'll tell you...
I asked when that's going to be available to the businesses. I was told that in July, July 1?
Well, the CDBG money will be available first.
Oh, the 572.
The 572 first, then the $1.6 will come on the heels of that.
Okay. So, but we have to do something quick. Businesses are suffering so much that to wait more of them, they're going to go and they have to close. I mean, 5,000 is not this major or big money, but at least may help them a little bit.
We, we experienced the calls just as you and are aware, we're moving as quickly as we can to get those funds out into the business community.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brot.
A question and a comment. So the question, I think, I think I know the answer to it, but I want to check. The CDBG program, the limitation, you mentioned income, that's really that 50% of the employees of the grantee have to be at or below a certain...
Correct.
...income level, right?
Yes.
It has nothing to do with the income or turnover of the business itself, it's just the employee base of the business, is that right?
Correct, it's generally the employee base.
Okay, that's the only restriction that we see on the CDBG program?
There are some other restrictions, including they have had to have been in business for a year, and they need to be a brick-and-mortar retailer. So those, I think, are the, are the primary restrictions, but the, the one that we are most concerned about and would likely adjust for the purpose of our grant program would be the low-mod income requirement.
Okay, okay, so I understand that. So, yeah, I know you wanted to, and we spoke about this yesterday, you wanted kind of go out with the CDBG program and get a feel for how, how things are working. But I guess it's, it's, it's different in that you're going to be hitting only a, a narrower population of businesses, whereas our program can be broader. So, I don't know, I'm kind of a little bit, you know, with the mayor in the sense that maybe we don't have the luxury of time to kind of do one and get all the experience and then do the other, maybe we have to kind of go in parallel? Just, just something to please think about?
Mr. Mayor, member of the city council, and I see Mr. Lanza Faim walking, walking up as well. It's good feedback and, and understanding the need, most definitely, for these types of grant programs that, that may be available to businesses. It is a very targeted group by way of the CDBG funding and the availability for that, so I don't know what your thoughts are, Mr. Lanza Faim, on that.
Along those lines, if, if the council would like, we'll just make them all $5,000 grants, and we can roll out ours at the same time. We will need to be very careful that we don't confuse business and this is the one you apply for if you have 50%. Everybody's eligible for this one. We just, we were going to take it in steps, but if the council would like to go all at one time, we'll, we'll dump our staffing request and, and try and push that out so that we're doing all 300 businesses at the same time.
Thank you. You know, what worries me is, this was last week or week before, we said, starting July, the businesses should pay the back rent also. Of course, they have time to pay, but however, July 1, they have to pay the rent, and there is, the businesses, most of them, they don't have business. So maybe the, if they get some money, will help them to stay, and later, the business will be in better shape if we help them as soon as possible.
Completely understand, and we, June 2 was when we knew that we had this money. The program, the CDBG program was approved last week, so we're on a dead sprint. And again, if the council would like us to issue all of them in $5,000 grants without, you know, doing one before the other, we will endeavor to do that as well. This is your program.
And in, in addition to what Mr. Lanza Faim is stating, as, as I'm trying to figure out, you know, the best way possible for us not to commingle the possibility of, of businesses not understanding and possibly not applying for the right grant, et cetera, we go as we were with the CDBG application process, which is supposed to open tomorrow with the July 1 deadline, I believe it is, is that correct?
The outreach begins tomorrow.
The outreach begins tomorrow, and...
Application's July 1.
Application's July 1, and the applications would be open for how long?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. So once the application for the CDBG is closed mid-July, we then, if we get direction from council today, we then open the secondary application process for the $1.6 million that council allocated by way of Measure S, with whatever threshold the council is comfortable with, whether it's 5,000 or, or something different, and, and then start that process right after we close the initial application period for the CDBG. That's also an option. There still could be confusion, I mean, no matter what, there will be some level of confusion, and we would do our best to, to get the information out to the community.
to get the information out to the community, provide that information. But some options, Mr. Mayor.
So, Mr. Garcia, I'm right, right? From starting July 1st, businesses, they have to pay the rent for month of July? Okay, then that's why, Mr. Najarian.
So with these two plans, would we permit a business to get funds at both, from both plans?
I would recommend no.
I would recommend no also. I mean, I think we want to make this as broad as possible and.
Actually, the way that we have, the way we developed the guidelines for the CDBG Program, which we would adapt for the other, the more general program, was you cannot have received other assistance. In other words, we want to make sure that we're hitting that, Ms. Hiromoto showed you, 75% had applied for federal funding. The numbers, 25% actually received it. So there's a lot of companies out there, business out there that didn't receive any funding. That's who we want to target with this. So that would be our recommendation as well, Mr. Najarian.
Okay.
And you also have the option, and I apologize, to do the city funds, the Measure S funds first, because it is a broader pool of businesses that could be eligible for that and do CDBG second. That's also another thought. We do have time to expend the CDBG funds through 2021, if I'm not mistaken and if my memory serves me well, but just different options that are available to us.
Mr. Brat?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud here, but do we even have to have people apply for one program or the other? Could we kind of handle that at the back end? Could we say, you apply for a program, we ask maybe for this income information, any qualifying applicant, we're gonna want to fund through the CDBG so that we use that up? I don't know. If we can hide that from, you know, not hide it, you know what I mean, but if we can put that at the back end so that it doesn't create confusion, then we can roll it all out at once. I don't know. It's up to you, you know.
It's definitely a possibility in terms of asking the questions on the front end and then the administration side of it of trying, either way, you have to try and figure that piece of it out in terms of eligibility requirements for the CDBG piece, most definitely. So that's also an option.
But if you're, you know, if you're looking for direction, I'm okay going ahead, you know, that way. If you think you really need the two weeks to do the CDBG and get the other one, I mean, I'm okay either way, what, you know, but basically would like to get this going as soon as possible, so that's.
While CDBG is going forward, we cannot ask to apply for the other one too?
Well, that's what we're saying.
Yeah.
I just don't want to, I just don't know administratively what staff can handle so quickly, so I kind of want to give a little bit of scope on that, but.
Okay. Okay, fear, all right, okay. Okay. I just have Ms. Hiromoto, that little bit earlier, you said that businesses were surveyed. How many businesses we surveyed and what type of businesses we surveyed?
Yes.
You had some list there, but not the numbers.
Yes, so we, in total, there were about 900 businesses that were surveyed. We had about 715 that applied to our first survey and there was 110 or so, perhaps 180, that responded to the second survey. I think part of the reason for the decline in survey responses in that second survey could just be survey overdose combined with, at the time when it was released, it was when the protests were just beginning as well. So anyway, we've had about 900 responses and the, if you give me a moment here, I can tell you the composition of those businesses.
I just don't want to see all the, one type of a business they get involved with this and the others are unaware of what's going on.
So we, about 14% were professional services, so there's, those were lawyers, accountants, engineers, et cetera. About 10% were personal care businesses, so barber and beauty shops. We had another 10% who were retail, 7% who considered themselves entertainment, 15% who were bars, restaurants, or food delivery, 22% which were other. So those were write-ins from dry cleaners to apartments, to art galleries. 4% were healthcare. So we did have a pretty broad range in the types of sectors that were represented in these surveys, combined with at least about 500 calls that had been received over the course of the three months. And these topics have been on things such as clarification between the non-essential versus essential businesses, what types of resources are available. And we've been listening to all of the council meetings and watching as well, so we've been listening to the community and hearing you in these conversations. So it, while some may not be represented within the survey, we have certainly done our best to have a broad range to represent all sectors. But if there is something that we are forgetting, we certainly want to be able to amend this draft strategy to be inclusive of everybody within this community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I, I need to ask another question, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. On the 500,000 grant program for artists and supporting nonprofits, when, does that start immediately? Is that going to be another, a different application? Would Arts and Culture Commission be involved in that at all or with recommendations or how exactly will that particular program work?
Yes. Thank you, council member. So, as mentioned, some of these recovery actions were just adopted by the council on June 2nd. So while we are more prepared to roll out some of the funding programs than others, we still need to develop what some of these other programs would look like. And this 500,000 dollar grant program is one of them. So really, the vision here is that these grants would be used to boost the recovery and impact for artists and nonprofits, serving the cultural diversity and equity objectives and creative vitality of the city. So there are certainly a large number of nonprofits that we have within the city, art galleries that could be the potential recipients of this. What we would look for direction from the City Council is whether you feel it would be appropriate for us to collaborate with the Arts and Culture Commission in developing this framework or at least getting feedback on how to develop a grant program. So that program certainly still needs to be developed and we would look for additional feedback on if there's any direction you would like us to take on that grant program.
Well, I just add that if they can be of any help to you, then certainly, you know, ask them for their help or solicit their, any information that they have.
Do I have to answer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
My input on this question, I thought this was gonna come up in a bit, but, yeah, I personally think the Arts and Culture Commission should take the lead on this. And, I mean, you can pull together a special meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission anytime you want, so I don't think you have to wait, right? You can, you can just get them together. I mean, we have a, we have a strong Arts and Culture Commission. And I know you mentioned during the briefing that you were thinking of using the task force, but the task force, the only person on the task force out of that community is Carolyn Tufankian and, you know, but she's one of the, is she one of the commissioners?
Yes.
I think she is, yeah. But I think it would be, so I think we have a fantastic commission. I think this is what the commission should be doing. I absolutely think they should take the lead on this and really help frame what this program is gonna be about and, you know, help determine, you know, how the grants get allocated. So that would be my two cents on this.
Yeah, I agree. I think commissions in general are an invaluable resource and we should make use of them as often as possible. So I would support that as, especially at this stage, as we're not sure how we're gonna frame it. I would support that.
Okay. So, let's continue.
Great, thank you. The other component of this is exploring what city fees can be waived or relieved, including utilities or temporary parking. This is something that ultimately would need further direction from the City Council. And again, we would continue to get feedback from you and the business community on direction on what this could look like. And then finally, implement the Alfresco Glendale Program, including authorizing 150,000 dollars of funds to this. And these funds would be utilized to purchase essentially equipment to establish these parklets and other outdoor spaces.
Can I ask a question on that?
Ms. Devine?
Yes.
Yes, who's responsible for like plants and umbrellas and just kind of the decorative solutions to those areas?
Yes. So that has been an economic development project. So what you're seeing right now on Brand Boulevard, for example, which is very underwhelming, it's just K-Rail, this is taking us a couple of weeks to be able to coordinate everything. So we've, we are currently purchasing tables, chairs, umbrellas, plants, planters, but all of those take a little bit of time to receive and then coordinate. And we're also working with Studio 111, who you've met through the Arts Hock Designs, and they are actually coordinating some of the design, including decals and paint on the K-Rail and how these should be designed. So you will see a transformation in the next two weeks with these parklets and I appreciate your patience on this. If we can just turn a switch, we would, but it's just taking a little bit of time.
I think they're terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How long do we keep those parklets? What's our thought on that?
So they're designed to be temporary, really to help the restaurants make up for some of their lost capacity. The permits will be live through December 31st, but if I were to say realistically, it seems that a September, October timeframe is when it may be appropriate. I'm only saying that because it will be the holiday season, people will shop again on brand, so I'm not sure that having parking spaces taken up for the parklets may, that may not be the highest and best use. But longest, December 31st, possibly September, October, but they can be, they can be removed just as quickly as they've been installed.
I'm just wondering if there's a, I mean, that's all very subjective. Is there, would there be perhaps an objective standard such as the Phase 4 of the state's recovery as stated by the governor or? I mean, I'm not, I'm not in a hurry to remove them, we're just getting started, but I'm just wondering, you know, looking down two, three months down the road, there may be an expectation that they, they may be very successful. Patrons in the restaurants may very much want them to stay.
So council member Najarian, we, it's, I'm smiling because as we were writing through the guidelines, we had quite some conversation about what is that perfect timeframe? And it's been difficult to nail down the county and figure out when they are going to reopen. So our initial reaction was, yes, let's align it with that, the Phase 4, when restaurants can be fully, at full capacity. But because we were not sure when that date was going to be, we decided to just keep it aligned with how our current sidewalk dining permits allow for, which is they all expire December 31st. So if we need to, and I apologize for being subjective on these dates, it's only to try to make up and give ourselves some wiggle room in the event if they are successful or if they're not. But at this point, they are definitely scheduled to expire December 31st, but at any point before then, we can choose to remove them.
So we had done this several years before. We had put some parklets out. I'm not sure if you were with the city yet. How long have you been with us? Five years?
Almost, four and a half years.
So maybe it was before that and it wasn't so much for dining experience. It was more, you know, take back the roadways and people put grass and chairs and, I think, if I remember each, there were groups that adopted a parklet and they did a different theme. Who remembers that? Who's the old timer here?
It was a pop-up.
Yeah, it wasn't very long at all. It was maybe just a day or two, but it was very well, it was very well received. So it's, you know, there's that whole tension, automobile pedestrian, automobile pedestrian. And now that we're doing this more, not straight pedestrian, but there may be some entitlements. Some people, you know, some may believe that we've now entitled it to be that. So just as you know how you're gonna unwind it and when you're gonna unwind it, it may be better if you have those subject, excuse me, objective things, so it doesn't come to council and we get into a huge policy debate in council as to, as to what to do. Not that we couldn't change your thing, but as long as we've got some guidelines, is that this is what we were intending when we put these in.
I make a comment. I have a very different take, as you can imagine. So I think we have no idea, right, how long, how long this COVID situations go on. It could, very well, we'll be into next year, so we just don't know. So it's like, it doesn't really make sense for us to talk about any specific date because of that. But also on, more on the point, I do want it to come back to council because I think we need to see how people respond to it. And as traffic comes back, as kind of life as usual comes back, let's see what kinds of issues it creates and just take it from there. I, the entitlement goes both ways, right? We're used to an entitlement where cars always take precedent over pedestrians and I don't like that and I'm gonna be pushing against that as much as I can, whenever I can. So to me, I really think this is a fantastic experiment. COVID is bringing it about, which is not a good reason for, but it's a great experiment. Let's see how the community responds and then we'll decide. And if it's really, and if it's causing problems and the merchants are complaining and blah, 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 then we'll pull it out and if everybody's, if everybody loves it, maybe we want to keep it. So that's, so I would like it to come back, so for us to really look at the, how the experience has been.
All right, thank you. What's next, Mr.?
Thank you.
Oh, can I say one other thing about the, about this Alfresco? Anyway, I mean, I love the program, Glenn, and I think it's great. You're rolling it out really fast. I love that you're using Studio 111. I think they're gonna really, really make it exciting. And the only, you know, my only worry has been this using up the sidewalks because, you know, we've been talking about, we want sidewalks to be wide enough for social distancing. We don't want people crowding up. And if, if the restaurants are taking up sidewalk and we're left with only a few feet and we haven't kind of provided any other space for people, because we, you know, we don't want to touch the parking, we don't want to touch the roadway, I see that as a problem. So I, I really would strongly discourage only doing the sidewalk at the exclusion of something else, especially if these sidewalks are only allowing, you know, I don't know, like four feet or something after the table. I think that's a problem.
No problem in Montrose.
Ms. Devine?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about Montrose. There's not a problem in Montrose. Jose Lechos has dining on the sidewalk and people walk by with their dogs and there's not a problem, so I'm not sure I see a problem.
How many, how many feet in Montrose, though?
Didn't we speak about how many feet the distance should be? I mean, there was some rules and regulation. We went.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as part of the sidewalk requirements for Brand and Honolulu, it's four feet, but as part of the conversation that the council had previously, you'd expressed wanting to be consistent with the six feet requirements through COVID. So again, we are, we are doing our best to put this puzzle together here with the businesses that can extend on the sidewalk. We are looking at creative solutions there. There's another component to the Alfresco, which is allowing the private sidewalk, or excuse me, the private parking lots to set up and extend their operations. And then the third component is the parklets. And just to let you know, we've had about 20 applications received so far to use one of those three components. So we're pleased to see that folks are already starting to, starting to get ready for the extended use.
From which area of the city you received those applications or requests?
Right now, it's primarily Montrose and Brand, on Brand Boulevard in downtown, but we have seen, there was a request that came in from Kenneth Village, I think one San Fernando, one just outside of Montrose. So we will continue our outreach on that and I think at this point, folks are just looking for wherever they can make up that. And I think at this point, folks are just looking for wherever they can make up that space, they will. And our, our team has been ready to assist on that.
Yeah. And on, sorry, sorry, just on Councilmember Devine's comment, I think you're talking about pre-COVID, when you said it's not been a problem, right?
I'm talking about the distance between tables on the sidewalks. People have plenty of room to walk. Hozalitos has tables by the curb. They have tables near the building. There's about four feet in between and people walk their dogs through there. There is absolutely no problem with pedestrians.
Pre-COVID, pre-COVID, right?
Well, yes.
Yeah, okay. So that's what, that's the point I'm trying to make is we, it's different now. It's not like it was back then. Four feet might have been fine back then. Four feet isn't fine now.
What? I, I don't get, I was up in Montrose two days ago and Hozalitos was packed and people were walking and there was not a problem.
And they're able to social, they're able to stay six feet apart when they pass?
Pre-COVID, pre-COVID. Pardon?
Are they able to stay six feet apart when they pass one another?
They don't, usually they're not packed, there aren't that many walkers that there's, that there's an issue.
But Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian.
Are there any ADA issues involved in this?
So.
What is that distance?
Again, that would be, we are aligning this program with the outdoor sidewalk or the sidewalk dining permit. So all folks that participate in this must submit the sidewalk dining. Now, that's different than the private, the, the folks who are utilizing the private parking lots, they have a temporary certificate of occupancy. So generally, it's.
ADA is four feet.
ADA is four feet, but on Brand and Honolulu, it is five feet.
And how about SEQA? What do we do with SEQA? Are we exempt from SEQA?
I think we've looked at it in some respect. I, I can't recall what exemption has been.
So, you know, I support the California Environmental Quality Act. I want to make sure that we, we don't overlook that and we make sure that it's, if we're required to follow it, that we do follow that.
Yes, sir. We'll confirm that.
Wow, you consider all those. I don't know when this will be ready for implementation. Anyway, let's continue.
Okay, we're halfway through here. So the third component here is the help businesses adhere to, to the health protocols. So really, this is about providing resources to businesses to obtain or offer discounts to purchase PPE, clearly articulate the public health orders, and to provide employees additional resources to help gain access to childcare. We would do this through the development of the grant program in which the city council has authorized funds for, by either providing PPE directly or offering discounts to businesses. The second would be to work with the fire department personnel to help inform businesses of safety protocol and again, to develop some of that visible branding that we've discussed earlier. And the third is develop a childcare program with the $250,000 that the city council authorized through the Measure S funding to either offer grants for PPE to childcare facilities or there may be another solution with those funds. But it, it seems that they, that may be the direction that we're going. And finally, this is an advocate, an advocate for all businesses. And this is really in the, the realm of city council. So the objective is to balance the different stakeholder interests through the development of fair local legislation aimed at returning to pre-COVID economic success. Second, to work with the local business districts and associations to enhance outreach, education to local business community. I think we can all agree that we cannot do any of this alone and we should really leverage our, our resources to have a greatest impact. And finally, ensure local businesses have abundant access to all resources available to them. We do take that, that to heart. There's so much information out there and we want to make sure businesses are receiving it as quickly as possible. So how are we going to do this? Unfortunately for the city council, some of this rests on, on your shoulders and it's really about developing those local balance ordinances, which you have, have been doing so just recently, and I know will continue to do so. The next is to maintain relationships with the task force to ensure that all employers continually get representation. The third is to implement the $150,000 grant fund to local business organizations where they could develop more training programs, access to funding resources, or broader technical assistance. And that, that could include partnering up for, with a business district, for example, to provide a certain number of webinars and they get funding for that. And then finally, to continue to establish relationships with our local and service providers. So with that, I, I'll just go ahead and skip over these, the economic recovery package that the city council has taken accounts for $4.2 million. That really is a tremendous boost to our local businesses and this is consistent with what you saw as part of the budget package. So finally, for the immediate next steps, these are some of the things that, that you are going to see very soon or have already started to see, such as the Alfresco Glendale, which we've spoken about. And the parklets will be installed in Montrose the week of June 22nd. So stay tuned on that. We have spoken about the CDBG outreach, which is scheduled to start tomorrow. We've also begun ordering some items for the PPE to provide to some of the businesses. And we have several next task force meetings set. We do have a task force set and we are prepared to update to council regularly and as requested. So with that, that concludes our portion of the presentation. The council direction that we're seeking today is to adopt and file this report. We're looking forward to any comments, recommendations you may have. And finally, a resolution to appropriate $150,000 so that we can get started immediately to initiate the Alfresco program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any question?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make some comments. First of all, thanks, I want to thank the staff for this presentation and I can definitely tell that they put a considerable amount of time in thinking about all these programs and ideas that they're trying to give shape to and implement. My comments are colored with an air of urgency and concern. When we initially started allocating these funds, I, I did not certainly anticipate that we would be in this halted economic, economic state for as long as we have with continuous uncertainty from both the county, state, and other, other levels. What compounds that uncertainty and that sense of anxiety, I think in the public is seeing this disparity, obviously as a nation, we're a combination of 50 states that each operate independently with their own guidelines. Some never even shut down, some have already reopened and there's a handful that remain under stay-at-home orders. And we're trying to figure all of this out as we're trying to field questions as, as council members. So I appreciate the kind of difficulty and uncertain waters that you're trying, trying to navigate through. In terms of my thoughts, Mr. Mayor and council, I don't like this idea of waiting for the state or the federal government to send in the cavalry as we have in previous discussions. Certainly, we are appreciative of the funds that they've sent, but now it's becoming clear to me as I talk to more individuals in the community and businesses that whatever we're allocating is not going to be enough to help the community. It's certainly the right thing to do and we should have done it and we'll continue to do everything that we can, but we're going to be just triaging. If, yeah, I don't have much to say about the Alfresco dining. Do it, that's fine. Let's try to get people out, but I think people's concerns are more than just being able to have people walk by them on the sidewalk with enough room. I think it's just getting people out of their homes and feeling safe enough to go out and eat. It's going to take $150,000 to implement this across the city. Just do it well. Make sure that the merchants and the restaurants are involved as well as the other folks that will be impacted by it. We can have discussions about permanency or, or lifestyle changes later on. Certainly, we're experiencing major lifestyle changes right now. Task force participants, it was mentioned in this, but I'd like to reiterate that we do have a number of banquet halls and banquet facilities in the city that have been speaking out and asking questions about how they can operate. Given that restaurants can operate, I know that staff has come up with some sort of guidelines or is coming up with parameters. And quite honestly, I don't care if the county doesn't allow them to. We have to figure out what we can do to help them operate or do whatever it is that they can do, given what they have available. So if it's providing meals, provide meals. If it's to do restaurant dining, as at one time, I think that the big consternation was that these banquet halls were not allowing walk-in dining, then we tell them that you can do walk-in dining and have them figure out how they implement it within the health guidelines. But the reason why they're important is not just because a number of banquet hall owners called us, it's because they touch upon a number of other businesses and industries and small business owners, individual businesses, such as photographers, dress shops, florists, you name it. And we should get them involved in this. I only saw one facility on this and if that you feel is fine, sure, but I would encourage you to include others. I like the fact that the school district is involved in this. I would encourage the college to be involved in this and to continue to remain in contact with them and make sure that they're a part of these discussions as well. The more people we have out there passing out the information that comes out of these tasks, task force, the, the easier it'll make the job on staff. I'm really not interested in hiring a marketing firm to, to promote local tourism. I, I've seen in the past and just from experience of working with some firms that I, I do not see the cost benefit analysis of putting money in to encourage people to come and stay in hotels in Glendale. People will come and stay where they're going to stay where there's availability. I certainly don't want to enrich any small firm in telling us what we already know. I think that we need to lead by example. I think if we're looking for businesses opening, then we need to be at the forefront of that. I do think that the city needs to have a clear plan that we put out to the public and letting them know that we are operating and we're operational and this is the guidelines under which we're operating. And I know that you're working on that. But I think the sooner we can do that, the sooner we can show the public that we're back, then others will follow suit. So we need to lead by example. And in that regard, I've, I've said this before, I think that we are, we can all agree that we're in a state of emergency. So that means having every available city employee, every body that we can be placed into an emergency operations center type situation to answer questions. The biggest problem, and I think you pointed out to, in this, in your survey, and you hear it, is this lack of clarity. We want clear information. And there's a lot of assistance that we've given to small businesses here, but you know, a lot of small, like individual businesses or people who are working as contractors, the gig economy or whatever that has taken a massive hit. A lot of individuals are daunted by the process. I spoke to someone just this weekend. We, we went out, we tried to support the local businesses. Obviously, a haircut was on the agenda, as was having dinner. And in talking to the person serving us, while she had been working, her significant other had not been and had been waiting for two months for unemployment benefits to come through. And I continue to hear about confusion regarding unemployment benefits. So if that means getting people who are right now working, part-time, working from home to go and man telephones at Verdugo Job Center or in our police community room and have a hotline that says we will have individuals with laptops trying to help other individuals in the city find the proper resources, I think we need to do that. It needs to happen. And I, I encourage staff and my, my colleagues to support an idea such as that, but we need to have people who are available to answer these questions and to help people navigate through this bureaucracy. You know, we, we are involved in the, in the policymaking aspect of it. We interact with government officials more than the average resident. And if we're confused by all of this, you can only imagine what the average citizen is going through. And for them, it has real implications. It means months of rent, wages, and a number of other things that have been sacrificed during this pandemic. So those are my thoughts and the sooner we can do this, the better.
Thank you. Ms. Devine, do you have anything to add to the comments?
No, I, well, I, I simply want to tell staff that I think they've done a great job on this, on this project, the recovery strategy. I think you hit the mark on all of the concerns and the themes that the business owners were concerned about. I, I too think that we should get these programs up and running as soon as possible so that the businesses know that help is on the way. And please, on the website, again, I can't stress it enough, and Mr. Gisaki, and said it again, you know, make it clear, concise, easy to get to information so that people can take advantage of our help and make the most of it. Because it's, it is, has been a rough time for them. Drove through the city a couple of days ago, as I said, there were people shopping at the Americana, they had bags and that was a good sign. Montrose, there were people eating outdoors, that's a good sign. So people are ready to, to take advantage of our businesses, enjoy our, our city. And it's, it's really important that businesses are able to make that possible. They can afford to stay in business, be up and running and, and still be safe. And I think that's another important part of this strategy is that we are funding, helping to fund their, their protocol for the safety of all of their clients, customers, and et cetera. So good job and I, I think it's great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one more thing. And thank you, Councilmember Devine, for those points. Also, yes, I, I echo your sentiments about making sure all information is clear on the website specifically, because that may be where people turn to first. You know, when, when we talk about customer service in the city, and I know a number of years ago, there was a big program rolled out with internally within the organization. One of the hallmarks of that was just more, very basic, was when someone calls and wants to be transferred to another department, you don't just transfer them. You call the department, you make sure there's someone at the other end, you make sure that there's a live human being before you transfer that individual. You know, we have to take that same sentiment to the public right now. We are their advocates. We are the ones who have the direct lines or I hope we do to all these different agencies. So it should not be enough just to say, well, you go to this website and you fill it out. If we call ourselves and we're not getting a response, I want staff to put themselves in the shoes of the individual, every single one of us. You know, I've done it myself in trying to figure out my way through this confusing times. And when I can't find, if I can't get ahold of someone, I'll call someone at the state level or at the county level and I'll tell them, there's an issue. What is this? Why can we not get it? Well, we had too many people, the phone system crashed or this, we've been inundated, there's a bottleneck. But now as a city, as a third or fourth largest city in Los Angeles County, we have to throw our weight around with our other agencies maybe above us and tell them what some of the issues are. It is our job to not only be advocates, but to be bulldogs on behalf of our local businesses and our residents.
Thank you, Mr. Bud.
Yeah, so first of all, you know, great job to you. I know throughout this period, I can't believe it's been three months, feels like a lifetime, but it's been three months to the day, I guess, since the orders came out. And I know, because when I, when I talk to businesses and, you know, I don't know as many as, as you probably do, but you know, they always, they always say great things about all of you. So I know the team has been out and about very, very aggressively and it's, it's been good. Just one thing I wanted to clarify on these allocations, my understanding is that we allocated six, 3.65 million from Measure S for business recovery, but we didn't specifically allocate down amounts for each of these categories like childcare, PPE, business organizations. We talked about it, but we didn't actually make those allocations. I want that to be, you know, clear. So I mean, if today you're asking for 150 to be allocated for Alfresco and 1.6 million for grants, I think we can vote to approve that. And I think that would make sense. But I think on the other ones, I just, just want that record to be clear because I, I've heard that comment come out. I think it came out at the, at the task force meeting, you know, city council. know, city council allocated this, city council allocated that. We actually didn't. So I want, maybe you can...
There wasn't overall, initially...
Overall budget.
Initially, the conversation from the budget study session was, was the individual programs. And then ultimately, after some level of discussion at the budget study session, the council decided, let's put forward X number of dollars, and it was 3.6 million dollars for the business recovery.
3.65, yeah.
For business recovery, and then we'll come back to you for you to allocate the funds accordingly. So you're absolutely correct, Mr. Brotman, that, that was discussed, and at the end, that was the direction from the city council. And so today, we are here to ask you for some direction, which I think we've received some, but we'll clarify again at the end here, and Jennifer will go through that, in terms of the things that we need at this point to be able to move forward on some of these items. So alfresco is one of them, the 1.6 million in terms of the business recovery grant program is the other, and some level of direction related to when you want that lottery to occur. Do you want it to be simultaneous? Do you want to leave that to us by way of a scope, as was mentioned earlier, to do it quickly, possibly do them together, et cetera? And so you're, you're correct.
Okay, so my, just in conclusion, so my, you know, my view would be try to do them together, but if you think that that's unwieldy, you know, I think it's, it should be staff's final call on that. And what I'm, what I think we're doing is, you know, we're, you know, I mean, potentially, we're going to earmark this 1.6 million for the grants and the 150,000 for the alfresco. We've talked about 500,000 for the arts, but I think we need to really look at what is needed. That number may be, we may not need all that, I don't know. So I think that's something that, I'd still like to kind of keep that a little bit undecided until that program is defined. And the same thing with the childcare, the PPE, and this, this support for the business organizations. I think, I still don't know what those are, so I don't really feel comfortable saying, you know, we're allocating an amount of money to them. But, yeah, that's basically what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Najari.
Ready to go forward.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that.
I know there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot still to be done. I think, when would this come back to us, Jennifer, do you think, with the details of everything we're mentioning and suggesting?
Yes, so, let me turn that over to Mr. Lanza Faim.
Yes.
Man, I also want to clarify, as Mr. Lanza Faim's getting seated, in terms of allocations, the funds were allocated by way of the budget, right? And so come July 1, the funds will be available by way of Measure S per the vote that was taken by the city council on June 2. How the funding, how the allocations are divvied up is the piece that, that we need to get clarification on. But, Mr. Lanza Faim.
Okay. You asked when would these be coming back?
I mean, all those, you know, there's the business, the business assistance, there's the arts, there's the details on the alfresco, which seem to be a little more firm, I think, that, as you've mentioned.
Take, for instance, the alfresco program, we've been working on that for maybe two weeks, and it's, where, where are we, where, when can we get it? All of these programs are stacking up on top of each other, and even, even if I had more staff, I don't know that we could deploy them all at the same time. My thought, as we're talking about using the Arts and Culture Commission, is to turn to my colleague in Library Arts and Culture and say, this program, you know, I need you to take that, you take that. And the daycare, we want to work very closely, because my colleague in Community Services and Parks is working on day camps and some daycare. So we'll, we'll put those things out. I anticipate that we would be bringing these back in maybe two months, because we'll be working on the grants and getting all of that out, figuring out the details on that. And then, as I look forward in your calendar, we've got to find places to slot this in, and we'll do that, and we'll put off what we can. But just some of the mechanics of it alone, it's six to eight weeks before I might come back with those other programs, unless my colleagues can pick them up, and even then, we'll deal with the, with the agenda schedule.
And if, and if this, Mr. Mayor, apologies, Mayor Ogagani, members of the council, in terms of this business strategy that's before you this afternoon, and as outlined in terms of what the funding levels are for each of the programs, if there is comfort from the council for us to be able to move forward with the levels that have been described to you in the report, as well as the, the two reports, the agenda report and the strategy report that has been given to you, overall, if you're comfortable with those dollars, it may be a little less, you know, based on the program, let's say, going to the Arts and Culture Commission, and as they are working through the program, they feel that they really may not need 500,000. They may need some things lower, or maybe some things slightly higher, who knows? But if you allocate the 500 today by way of saying, yes, I'm okay with this strategy, then that way, staff, whichever department is working on it, has the ability to say, we're within these confines, and the council is comfortable with 500,000 for, for the arts, 250 for childcare, a million for PPEs, et cetera, so that the work can get done while we're doing some of the other programs as well. I think that would be helpful for us. And, and timewise, I think it would behoove us to move forward on some of these items sooner rather than later.
Ms. Devine, you want to say something?
Yes, well, I was just going to ask the city manager, and if the allocation is too much, if there's, there are funds left over, we can always put them in another pot and use them. It's not like we lose the money, correct?
Absolutely. Councilmember Devine, members of the city council, the funds would go in terms of the allocations that were done by way of Measure S, it would go back into Measure S, and council has the authority to, and you would give us that policy direction in terms of where you'd want to place those funds.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll move this item, the, Mr. Arce, can I move both of them?
Yes.
The, the recovery strategy.
1A and 1B?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Devine, they can be moved together.
You can move together, 1A and 1B.
I will move the items, move items 1 and 2, A and B.
Okay, is there a second?
Can I just ask clarifying point?
Yes, please.
By moving these two, I know there's the 150,000 for the alfresco, that's very clear to me. What is, the other thing we're moving is basically a report and file, right?
But, yes, but the strategy basically does describe, as is, does describe where the pots of money would be allocated.
Okay.
And then staff would have the opportunity to then go work on each of those items. Now, I, you know, in my mind, we've received quite a bit of feedback on the 1.6 million dollars in terms of the business grant program today. We have enough to go off of, on, and, and implement. The other pieces would have to go to different departments, possibly, and/or stay within CDD, and some things may come back to you by way of that conversation. So 500,000 goes to Library Arts and Culture, the commission makes some recommendations, puts a strategy together, that would come back to you.
Okay.
Et cetera.
Okay.
On, on that basis, I'm, yeah, I'm okay with that.
You're sitting next to him.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, and so I just want to make sure that, when I ask about available bodies to make, to be that link between the programs, whether it's city, state, or otherwise, do we have people that we can put on those phones and able to answer those calls right now?
Today, we have a number of people answering those questions that are coming by way of a number of different folks from the community and from beyond the community, really. And if we don't know the answer, my expectation would be that we would find out what that answer is, or provide the link, I don't mean link by way of website link, but those linkages with the individuals who are calling and assisting folks in, in that manner, whether that's way, by way of our office, community development, Verdugo Job Center, there are a number of folks who are answering phones on a daily basis, emails, et cetera, and providing that kind of service. So we, we do have staff available for that, yes.
But we have staff available to enhance that, or we're just going to stick with what we're doing right now?
As it is today, if, if you all feel that we need to enhance that somehow by way of an EIC type of a setting, where I have, you know, 10 different staff members sitting in an information, emergency information center, an EIC, I, I don't think that that is necessary, but if the council feels that we need to have an EIC in place to field calls that are coming to different departments currently, and those departments are typically able to answer those calls, we would be able to do that as well, because we would pull from the different departments and have them in one area. That, that could happen as well, if that was something that was the council's direction in terms of implementing something of that nature. We, we could definitely do that. We've done it, we've done it in the past, as you know.
I would like to see that, because I, you know, I have no doubt that all the departments are busy, we're all busy, even council members are busy answering telephone calls and trying to figure stuff out. But if there was a place within the city that the calls could come in and then be given out to the individuals, I guess, what I'm envisioning is, is city staff that is in an EIC, EOC, but acts almost like the caseworkers for these individuals, helps them, direct them to exactly where they need to go to get the answers, and doesn't just let, let them loose and, you know, figure out it on their, have them figure it out on their own and increase the level of anxiety people are already feeling.
I mean, you know, we have to make sure that we're trained in the areas that, that the expectation from this dais would be. You know, in terms of city employees, we, we have the training to provide a myriad of services and answers, and we have access, as you all know, to quite a bit of information and access to many organizations that, that we can then provide those, those linkages. And my expectation of the organization, and we sent an email out, you know, by way of our customer service guru, I call her, Christine Powers, last week, in, in terms of the importance of how we answer the telephone as a reminder, and our responsibility to respond to calls that are coming in in a timely manner if, if they've left a voicemail for whatever reason. And so our training is, you know, as far as it goes. And, and so becoming caseworkers, I'm not sure that we're trained to become caseworkers in, in certain aspects, but in any, you know, scenario that we are able to provide that type of assistance, my expectation today, whether it's pandemic today or non-pandemic today, is that we would assist in any way that we can to, to make sure that we're providing that service to the community. So we would do our best to, to continue to provide those types of services and, and hold hands as much as possible, especially now with all the anxiety, most definitely.
Mayor, if I may.
Ms. Devine.
Yeah, Ms. Thiers, I, I don't know if we've had situations in the past where we have not been able to answer questions. Can we, may I suggest that we get this information out there and see if we have a flood of calls, that we need extra, extra people to answer the phones, and then you can either bring it back to council that we need this, or you could administratively assign people to answer the calls.
Yeah, three months ago, Councilmember Devine, we were flooded with calls, as you can imagine. You know, two months ago, we were flooded, I mean, the phones were ringing off the, the hook in, in our offices. Absolutely, just based on the number of calls that were coming in. That has clearly slowed down, and, and now it's pockets of, of people, pockets of types of questions that come through where people need assistance. It's confusion by way of, of county orders and our ability to help navigate people through that process. It is a number of calls that go to VJC, whether it's unemployment calls, and VJC then, then connects them to the right folks who are right next door to them, and, and they have that ability to, to make those connections. And so the number of calls have subsided, but now we're seeing more, more specific calls based on the need that's out there, and it's clarification to businesses, residents. I know community development, housing section gets a number of questions daily regarding, you know, housing and eviction, moratoria, et cetera. And so we don't have a, an influx of calls coming in at this time.
But, if, Mr. Mayor, if I can, one of the things that we have adapted to, and to use the banquet halls and even prior to that, pools, when, when we get the information, and once we do get the information, we're then able to go out and, and in private pools, for instance, there's only two facilities in Glendale, we're able to reach out and give them both that same information, and then we, we start that relationship, so there's a call every day, and not every day, every week, has it changed? The banquet hall issue came up. When we got clarification from the county that banquet halls can open as, and it's their condition was, as long as they're permitted as a restaurant, to operate as a restaurant, we put our team together right away, and we figured out a way that we can allow them to, right now, open as a restaurant, provided that they're meeting all the protocols, county protocols of a restaurant. We're designing a very simple, here's how, with those protocols, and then there's 20, 25 or 26 banquet halls, we'll go out to them individually and say, here's how you operate as a restaurant. And we're starting to employ that technique of picking up that information and then getting out to specific business clusters, if you will, and, and getting that information out to them. We just, we haven't got the, the materials yet, but my anticipation is by next week, we'll have all that, we'll know what it is, not on the agenda, but I will ask the city manager, much like we have done with others, to waive that, that fee to get the, it's TCO that they need. And then we just process that, we do that through concierge. So if they want to set up as a restaurant, we should be able to get them done fairly quickly.
And, and what Mr. Lanza Faim's referring to, and I wasn't using my words well, is deployment, right? And it's deployment of staff in areas that are needed. And so initially, it was, you know, all hands on deck and trying to figure out, in the midst of a, a pandemic that took over us rather quickly, to now really focused efforts of what that deployment looks like. And it's, community development, you know, carries a lot of that, but we have staff from police department, community services and parks, management services, every department, and they've taken on from, you know, not just what they do, but what other departments are doing as well, and providing that information. If you feel that there are pockets where we're not hitting that mark, and, and it's very possible, please, you know, let me know, and we will do our best to, to make sure that we are providing that exceptional customer service in, in all areas that we absolutely can and, and will. And so if there are pockets that somehow are getting missed, we will, we will look at it. Some things are going to take some time, because we do have to wait for the, the county to give us responses to certain things. And the level of confusion that has been out there, we experience it as well. You know, one week, tanning salons are not allowed to be open, and we have that information out there, and, you know, a tanning salon may open, and others are looking and saying, why is this individual open and not us? Well, they're not supposed to be open. And then we hear, as of this Friday, tanning salons will be allowed to be open. And so we then pivot and then try to, to get on that education piece to let the folks who we just told two days prior that they're supposed to be shut down, that they need to open on that Friday. And so it is something, it is something out of the movies we've never experienced before, and we're doing our very best, and we'll continue to, to adjust.
Well, I, so, so I'd just like to suggest that on Mr. Gisaki's idea, that we watch and wait, and if we, if you see a problem, then administratively, you can... And if we, if you see a problem, then administratively, you can, you can set up pools of, of staff to take those calls or handle them the way you have in the past. But I don't know that we need a, we need that to be in the strategy at this point. So I've moved the item.
Okay, we have. We have the second, I guess, Mr. Brottman. So I guess I have the motion, so for item one A and one B. Am I correct? So, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brottman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Now, I guess it's time to adjourn. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. So with that said, the meeting is adjourned at 4:00 PM.
No.
Okay, see y'all later.